Good evening. Calling to order, the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting. Please rise and we will say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Hood?
Here.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Here.
Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Luther?
Here.
Councilmember Norris?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Satell?
Here.
Councilmember Westy?
Here.
All right, all eight council members are present. Next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Make a motion for approval.
Second?
Motion is made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Luther to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
No.
Nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Westy?
I'd like to make a motion to remove bill number sixty-four ninety.
Second.
Okay, councilmember Westy makes a motion to remove bill number sixty-four ninety from under perfection of bills, seconded by councilmember Satell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Any further changes, comments, friendly amendments? I hear none, all in favor of tonight's approved agenda? Okay. All in favor of removing bill number sixty-four ninety from tonight's agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. No further comments, changes? All right, all in favor of tonight's approved agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, tonight's agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I do not see any cards this evening. We'll move on to letter F, approval of the minutes.
Make a motion for approval.
Second?
Motion is made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Luther for the approval of the minutes from March the sixteenth. Okay, changes?
Mayor, it should have been April second?
April second, the minutes from April second. Any changes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to amend the minutes as given in handwritten notes to Ms. Spencer this evening, mostly grammatical errors and a couple corrections.
Okay. Any further amendments, changes?
Is there a second on that one?
Second?
I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
Okay. Motion is made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Luther to amend the minutes from April second as she described. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Any further changes? Okay. All in favor of the approved amendments from April second? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. The minutes are approved for April second. Next item on the agenda, letter G. I'm going to call up Chief Masadi.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight I want to recognize two of our commanders on the Police Department for their recent graduation from the Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command. This is an intense leadership management education program that helps prepare experienced law enforcement professionals for success in senior command positions. This intense program was ten weeks long and was hosted by the Maryland Heights Police Department. In the class that they graduated from, there were thirty command-level officers that attended the sessions over that ten-week period. They represented agencies across the state of Missouri, the state of Illinois, and as far away as New Mexico. The benefits of this experience will help continue the professionalism of our city, which has come to expect this from our Police Department commanders. So, it's a really intense program that they go, there's a lot of after-school studying. I know we had Lieutenant Ryan Dick-Harver that attended this a few years ago, and we want to continue having upcoming commanders and current commanders attend this as it comes to St. Louis. I just wanted to give you a quick bio on Lieutenant Dusold and Lieutenant Black here. So Lieutenant Dusold's got thirty-one years of service with the Police Department. She was like me, she started at the age of twenty-one. So, she's also been a crime scene investigator, a detective, certified fire investigator, and arson investigator. She's a member of the Major K Squad and the Midwest Financial Fraud Investigation Unit. She currently is pursuing a bachelor's degree, and she was promoted as to Sergeant in two thousand seventeen and promoted to Lieutenant in two thousand twenty-two. Lieutenant Black has eighteen years of police service with our department. He also did nine years in the United States Marine Corps, and he was a field training officer, he's what we call MAC Tech instructor, that's instructors that teach our officers how to respond to active shooter incidents. A crime scene investigator, he's also our peer support coordinator for the Police Department, and what that is, is that's the wellness program that we have to maintain check-ins with our officers to make sure that they're fit mentally and if they need any assistance personally with stuff like that, he's the coordinator for that. He also was assigned to the St. Louis County Special Investigations Unit. He was detached by our department and he worked undercover dealing with child sex crimes. So he did that for a number of years and was also in our Detective Bureau. He was promoted to Sergeant in two thousand eighteen and promoted to Lieutenant in two thousand twenty-two. I am here to tell you I'm extremely proud of their accomplishment with attending this class, and I continue to, will continue to help them as they proceed and excel in their careers in the future. But I just wanted to introduce and let the council know what they had done in this class and what we're providing to our officers as we move forward into the future, and I want to congratulate both of them on this prestigious accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Dusold and Lieutenant Black for your service to the Bridgeton community and the Police Department, very much appreciated, and congratulations on your accomplishment. Thank you. The next item on the agenda where we have any business is K. It's emergency legislation, contracts and bids. It's a motion to approve emergency replacement of a compressor located in R T U number three. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the emergency replacement of one of the R two U number three compressors according to Haber Berger's proposal dated April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second?
Motion is made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke to approve the emergency replacement of one of the R T U number three compressors according to the proposal dated April fifteenth in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. We're going to call the roll on that?
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Satell?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, the emergency legislation is approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is perfection of bills. Bill number six-four-eight-nine, councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for first reading of bill number sixty-four eighty-nine.
Second?
Motion is made for second reading of bill number six-four-eight-nine by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number twenty-five P Z zero-two, amending special use permit ordinance number zero-seven-zero-three to allow for a monopole telecommunications tower with exterior equipment located at three-seven-three-two McKelvey Road. Move to table bill number sixty-four eighty-nine.
Second?
Okay. Isn't this perfection of bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Move that bill number, pardon me, I, on second thought, I move that bill number sixty-four eighty-nine become ordinance number twenty-five dash?
Fifteen.
Second?
Motion is made by councilmember Luther, seconded by councilmember Luke. That bill number six-four-eight-nine become ordinance number twenty-five dash fifteen. Discussion, councilmember Norris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just had a question from a constituent, was just wondering about, about the cars that are around that. Is that, I mean, is that used cars or is that a junkyard? They were just saying that it was, and since it came up, I thought I'd ask, do you know Mr. Greit?
Mr. Gunn?
Gunn, Greiten?
Either one?
So, thirty-seven-three-two McKelvey Road, where the lease area for the telecommunications tower is located, the main use on that property is an auto repair facility, which it requires a special use permit in the B two district. I don't know for sure what their special use permit and when it was approved, but this is a leased area on the larger lot.
Okay.
So, the cars are related to that business on that property.
Okay, so they are being worked on or is that being stored? Do you have any idea?
I don't have an answer to that. That would be something that could be looked into if there was a concern about it.
Right, they had just thought that that was becoming a, the word was junkyard, so.
Sure, but that's, even though it's on that property and this is leased from that property, it's not related to the south tower.
Exactly, I know that, but it came up and it was, they're like that real close, so I thought I'd ask.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? I see none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Satell?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number six-four-eight-nine becomes ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen. Consideration of new bills, bill number six-four-nine-one, councilmember Westy?
I move for first reading of bill sixty-four ninety-one.
Second.
Motion is made for first reading of bill number sixty-four ninety-one by councilmember Westy, seconded by councilmember Satell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, continue.
Bill sixty-four ninety-one is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with Parkscape Solutions LLC for Phase Two of the park improvements at Gentry Park in the amount of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars, with a contingency in the amount of ten thousand dollars. I move to suspend council rules and allow for the second reading of bill sixty-four ninety-one.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Westy, seconded by councilmember Satell to suspend council rules for second consideration of bill number sixty-four ninety-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, please continue.
I move for the second reading of bill sixty-four ninety-one.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Westy, seconded by councilmember Satell for second reading of bill number sixty-four ninety-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, please continue.
Bill sixty-four ninety-one is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with Parkscape Solutions LLC for Phase Two of the park improvements at Gentry Park in the amount of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars, with a contingency in the amount of ten thousand dollars. I move that bill sixty-four ninety-one become ordinance number twenty-five sixteen.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Westy, seconded by councilmember Satell that bill number six-four-nine-one become ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen. Discussion? I see none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Satell?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number six-four-nine-one becomes ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen. Next item on the agenda, attorney's report.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Tallis. Council Communications, I'll start with councilmember Westy this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for coming out tonight, I appreciate it, and I actually don't have anything to say, so back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Satell?
I'll make it short as well, thank you, nothing to say.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing.
Okay. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor, just, I want to congratulate everybody on the election results, and also we did pass Proposition Three of last week. So, and thank you all for not only coming today and listening to the council meeting, but also for voting, so we had a pretty good turnout, I think. I wanted to mention that April twenty-third, a week from today, at six-thirty P M, Ward Three will have a, one of its four ward meetings in this very room, and that there is, someone might be covering this, on April thirtieth, there is a second P G A V open house, and I believe it's four-thirty, did I get that wrong? Six, six, thank you. Six o'clock at the Bridgeton Recreation Center, you're all welcome to attend. On May seventeenth, there will be a Cove meeting, that's a subcommittee that I chair, that will be at six o'clock prior to the second council meeting of the month. And that I did have a couple of questions. One is, have we heard anything about the Police Training Academy that is proposed for the region? And also, any word on bids that were solicited for airport property formerly Carrollton when it gets around to staff?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, May seventeenth, I've got the wrong date on that. It would be May twenty-first. Sorry, not May seventeenth, May twenty-first. Okay.
All right, councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you to all the voters who went out to vote either as an early voter or on Election Day. We do really appreciate you going out and taking the time to do that. Also, congratulations to Lieutenants Dusold and Black on your achievements. It's been a busy couple of weeks. On Election Day, April eighth, there was a clergy luncheon at Bridgeway Church. I was able to attend and give an ex officio report, and along with Chief Masadi was there to give an update on the Police Department. On April ninth was the most recent civilian response to active shooter training class where Detective Miller and Nash provided an overview of what to do in the event we get caught in that type of situation. It's good to have that type of situational awareness. If, when the class does come up again, I encourage everyone to attend. April eleventh, last Friday, was Arbor Day at Bridgeway Park, and I don't know, it looked like two classes from the school right there came, a bunch of fourth graders. They were really cute and really engaged in planting a tree, so that was nice to see. April fifteenth was Tax Day yesterday. Congratulations, Mayor, on yet another successful tax year completion. I hope you rested today. Today, we also got to tour the former K V Pharmaceutical building, and I'm assuming we'll hear more on that coming up in the weeks and months ahead. The National Day of Prayer is going to be May first, that's a Thursday, here at noon at the City Hall, and they have an entire agenda where they pray for multiple specific things within the city, the government, the family, militia, media, business education, first responders, and church. So, it's open to the public, everyone can attend. And then the last thing I want to say is thank you to Mr. Bookout for sending out a letter to our local postmaster regarding the recent postal issues. And piggybacking on that, on April first, Josh Hawley, Eric Schmidt, Ann Wagner, Bob Onder, Jason Smith, Sam Graves, and Eric Burlison sent a letter to the Federal Inspector General also regarding the mail services here in St. Louis area and St. Charles area. So, we appreciate all of that and let's hopefully get the postal service fixed. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris?
I do have something, you know that. I do want to congratulate all the winners, winner, winner, chicken dinner on the Bridgeton election. It was very successful. And I also want to thank Brendan Kane for the very nice arbitrary April the eleventh at Bridgeway Park, the students from Bridgeway Elementary, they shared the ceremony. I thought it was really pretty warm, but you get up on that hill at Bridgeway Park, and it was pretty chilly, so everybody was, didn't stay a whole long too because it was very cold. And I also wanted, I'm just going to wear another hat, thanks to all who attended the annual Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast. The club appreciates the cooperation from the City of Bridgeton and of course, the Kiwanis and their commitment to the City of Bridgeton and Maryland Heights. At the school level, we're giving out very generous scholarships this year to Pattonville High School, so we're very pleased and you're part of that, thank you very much. And also, we're competing with the, not competing, we can't have enough prayer. It is National Prayer Day, May first, the Kiwanis Forty-second Annual Prayer Breakfast will be held at Cyberg's from seven A M. to eight fifteen, and there is a fee for us, I'm sorry, it's not free, it's twenty dollars. So if you're interested, you can contact me or Ron Abernathy. I just want to appreciate, you know, everyone, and if they can come by, that is, again, we will have many of the clergy from the surrounding churches. And I need, we need to know by April the twenty-fifth. And again, appreciate, and Happy Easter to all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hood?
Yes, I just want to congratulate Chief Masadi with his training outlook towards the commanders because that school is, it's not a cakewalk. They had to work very hard in order to pass it, and they did very well, and I'm really proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, staff reports. I'm going to start with Mr. Gunn, Parks and Recreation, I mean, Public Works.
I know, big change. Pool's going to open soon. I have nothing to report.
All right. Mr. Kane, the real Parks and Director.
Did the street sweeping this week? Street sweepers were out. Just a reminder, the plant giveaway is next Saturday, April twenty-sixth, from nine to ten A M., just outside the outdoor pool, put on by the Beautification Commission. We appreciate all the work they do and helping out with that event. Pink cone flower will be the plant, and please bring a non-perishable food item in exchange for the plant and proof of residence. Thank you.
Chief Masadi?
Two quick things, the DEA Drug Takeback Day is going to be on the Government Center parking lot on April the twenty-sixth, ten A M. to two P M. So that's approaching rapidly. The second thing was to respond, last week I had attended the press conference on the police, Regional Police Training Center. They announced, what happened was is the four counties involved, which is St. Louis County, St. Charles County, Franklin, and Jefferson County. Those government entities got together and were able to get their agreements put together. So, after that was done, that solidified the fifty million dollars that the state had allocated towards that project. So now that that's happened, they'll start moving forward with the development of the intergovernmental committee that's going to run that organization, and that committee will be doing the land selection. So they're the ones that are tasked with the various overviews of looking at where they're going to put it. So that's kind of where it's at right now. They had to get this first step, which was a big one, that they got together and that's already solidified. So they're working on putting together that intergovernmental committee, which will oversee that entity. So that's where they're at right now.
Anybody have any questions, the chief? I see none. We're moving along here. Mr. Bookout?
Yes. The, we have been in contact with the folks at the airport, the director and one of her deputy directors, and they did inform us that they did not receive any proposals on the request for proposals that they had sent out last year. They, they had a deadline of the end of January, they pushed it back to the end of March, but he did inform me earlier this month that, that they did not receive any, and the mayor and I are going to be setting up a, a meeting with the two of, the two of them, the director and the deputy director, in the coming weeks to talk about the next steps for them and, and what their options are with the Carrollton West property. So, should be providing more on that in the coming months. The Pattonville School District has reached out to us on the Fall Dinner, so I think they want to get on the schedule early. I did have something in the, in the weekly on Friday, I haven't heard back from everybody, but I want to let you know that there were three dates that they proposed. One was September thirtieth. The other two were October twenty-first and October twenty-eighth. The latter two have conflicts with some of the boards and commissions. The thirtieth was the only date that I saw on the calendar that there were no conflicts. So, if you all are okay with that, I would like to get that on the calendar with the school district and let them know that, that that's the date we're, we're looking at scheduling for that dinner. Any thoughts, any ideas on that, if that's okay? Yeah, Tuesday night, September thirtieth, with the, with the school district. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bookout. Mrs. Norris has a question.
Well, do you need an answer tonight? Yes from everyone?
Pardon me?
Do you need a yes on that date?
If, if you all can make it, if, I mean, I know that it's planned out pretty early, but if, if there's a conflict, yeah, that'd be great if you could let me know.
Yeah, okay. Well, we don't need a motion, just.
No, I don't think we need a motion.
I'm a yes.
Make a motion to accept that date, somebody want to second it?
That's not a, I don't think we need to make a motion. Point of order.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a. We don't, okay.
Thank you.
Just all in favor?
Okay. Anybody else? Next item is the mayor's report. First of all, thank you, Ms. Spencer, for filling in, for caring again this evening. Appreciate your help. And also, I was approached by our I T person, Tom Rickard, prior to the meeting, informing me that the visual equipment is broken this evening, so if people go online to view and listen to tonight's meeting at a later date, all they will get is the audio portion of it. Congratulations to the elected officials. For those of you that don't know, Judge LaRue just ran his last election and was elected. He will be termed out according to the state of Missouri statutes a few days prior to ending his two-year term because of his age. Required mandatory. Required mandatory retirement age for municipal judges is seventy-five years old. So at that time, he will have almost forty years under his belt as municipal judge here in Bridgeton. May first, as Mrs. Norris pointed out, is the Kiwanis Prayer Breakfast. Along with that, I think Ms. Luke pointed out that the National Day of Prayer will be held here in the City Council chambers. I believe that starts at one, at twelve o'clock. Okay. We hosted that last year also. The more people that know about it, the better the turnout. It, it is a nice event. My next door neighbor, I wanted to put out a shout for Rosemary Hardy. She passed away on the eighth of April. So we've been neighbors for twenty years, as of last November. Rosemary and her husband, John, purchased their home, brand new, in nineteen sixty-four on Scotch. Rosemary and her husband both were very involved in, in city activities, serving on boards and commissions. Mainly the senior service office, Rosemary helped out and she helped with Meals on Wheels also. She was eighty-eight years old, she will be deeply missed. She does have one grandson that I believe he currently is still working for the Parks Department, part-time, Ben Wallace. And he's a full-time college student also, but very nice young man. And he looked out for his grandmother very well and continues to look over her property until they get it up for sale. But Rosemary will be deeply missed by many. I want to put out a thank you again to all the people that have been helping continually since the March fourteenth tornado. At the Pancake Breakfast Sunday, the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast at the Rec Center, Mr. Abernathy approached me and said he would like to put together a kind of a, a thank you luncheon for city employees. So keep that in mind, there will be more information coming out on that later. Also, a neighbor on Domenico, a resident in Ward Three, has called me and has made the suggestion of putting together a block party thanking the employees of Bridgeton, the Police Department, Public Works Department and the Parks and Rec Department for their efforts. So as soon as I get more details on that, we'll get that out to the employees also. Along with the DEA Drug Take Back Day on the twenty-sixth of April on Saturday from ten to two, I've arranged for a local paper recycling business to drop off a container which will be open for people to put in documents and any other papers that they would like shredded. This will not be done on-site. Once the event is over, at two o'clock, there will be a lock provided and the container will be locked and the driver will pick up the container as quickly as possible after two PM. It will be taken to their locked storage facility and the documents and papers will be shredded on Monday. So I'll try and get something out on, on our website tomorrow and also on social media regarding this. At this time, we're not having a recycling event. We might do that in the fall, again, with paper recycling and the Drug Take Back Day in the fall. But stay tuned for more details. I want to give a shout out to the EPA Director, Lee Zeldin, and also Senator Josh Hawley. It looks like they're gonna start excavation a couple of years prior to what they originally anticipated. And I appreciate that. So they're looking towards two thousand twenty-seven for a start date on that. There was an article in the Post Dispatch this week, so if you go back and look at that, there's a lot of good information in there about that. I too attended the Arbor Day celebration at Bridgeway Park. Brendan, our Parks Director, does a very nice job over there along with Vicky, our Assistant Parks Director. And it's always nice to see the students come and learn about, you know, trees and, you know, different various species of trees and types of trees. So thanks for putting that together again, Brendan. We appreciate that. You know, talking about the, the, the post office, the, the postcard, you know, that the city sent out, that's ridiculous. They were mailed the eleventh or twelfth of March and I just got mine last Thursday or Friday, I believe. And it was not postmarked, but that, that just shows how inefficient some of our government operations are. And I think it's unacceptable. With me saying that too, I think that we have room here also with the City of Bridgeton for improvement. I do want to work on being more responsive and being efficient and also handling things in a timely manner. So keep those three things in mind, department heads, employees. I too, myself, am guilty and I'm sure council members are all, but I, are also, but I think we all have room for improvement. And keep those three words in mind, let's work on that and make sure things flow smoothly and more rapidly. That I think that would help residents be favorable with the city. And I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Tallis, for joining us tonight in place of Mr. Lennabroker. Happy Easter to everybody. If you have any questions, I'll be around here for a few minutes afterwards. Thanks for attending the meeting. Motion for adjournment?
Second?
Motion's made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Norris for adjourning. Or Councilmember Luther? Who second it?
I thought somebody from down there.
Councilmember West, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And none opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.